I don't think we have too much on here tonight.
At this time, we'd like to call to order the September 17th meeting of the Yukon City Council. And we'd like you to stand, please, for the invocation by Pastor Bob Younts and flag salute.
Let us pray. Oh, loving Creator God, whose grace both makes the rain to fall and the sun to shine, tonight we are humbled in your presence. You have made us in such a way, oh Lord, that we are meant to live in community and to be governed by leaders. Empower these representatives of our city to make decisions that are fair and just, that are good for all in our town, people of all incomes and all cultures. Give to them wisdom and insight, patience and courage, honesty and integrity. For them and for all who labor for the common good, leaders and soldiers and laborers and politicians, we pray your tireless blessings. Tonight bless our community with resources and growth, with harmony and goodwill. We pray in the name of him who is all truth, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Smith.
Here.
Opitz.
Here.
Alberts.
Here.
Gerba.
Here.
McCarron.
At this time, we have presentations and proclamations. We do have one. Let's see, we would like to invite Sharon Hayes.
Sharon Hayes.
And Gina Legali.
And Gina Legali to come forward, please. Welcome, ladies. I'd like to read this proclamation. Says, "Whereas September 17th, 2013 marks the 226th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Ken Smith, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Given under my hand the seal of the City of Yukon, the 17th day of September 2013, Ken Smith, Mayor Yukon, Oklahoma." Thank you so much. Now, I am sure you have got some valuable words to share.
No pressure.
Thank you so much from the Fort Reno chapter and from the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution. It was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution many, many years ago when they petitioned Congress to start recognition of Constitution Day and Constitution Week, as well as Citizenship Day. And it has been, I think, like 50 some odd years now. I can't remember exactly. But nevertheless, our students and schools around the United States are ringing bells and they are working on learning about the Constitution this week. And I think it's just right that all of us here tonight are doing the same. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Sharon, do you have anything you'd like to share? Thank you. At this time, we'd like to invite any visitors that are here to share something other than an agenda item, something that is a non-agenda item. Do we have any visitors here that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll recess as the Yukon City Council reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all Authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The City Manager recommends a motion to approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of September 3rd, 2013; and B) payment of material claims in the amount of $175,238.38. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
At this time, we will adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1, the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all City Council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The City Manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of September 3rd, 2013; B) payment of material claims in the amount of $396,325.14; C) designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade. D, consider approving installation of four stop signs and two speed limit signs in Wagner Lake Edition as recommended by the Traffic Commission. E, consider directing the City Manager to engage the City Engineer to investigate standards and location placement of rumble strips along Stone Mill Boulevard, Metal Run Court, and Stony Brook as recommended by the Traffic Commission. Item F, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for October 1st, 2013, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion. I would like to pull Item E from the Consent Docket to be considered independently.
All right, separating Item E, do we have a motion to approve the Consent Docket?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Now, I have a question right here for point of order. Do we have to withdraw the previous motion in order to... Or do we have to at least modify?
Yes, withdraw the previous motion.
Mr. Gerba should either withdraw or modify his initial.
Mr. Gerba, would you like to withdraw or modify your previous motion?
Yes, sir, I'd like to modify it, omitting Item E from the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Any discussion on everything other than Item E? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item E, "Consider directing the City Manager to engage the City Engineer to investigate standards and location of placement of rumble strips along Stone Mill Boulevard, Metal Run Court, and Stony Brook as recommended by the Traffic Commission." Excuse me. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Actually, I've got a quick question. I'm not really familiar with rumble strips, or in this case, yeah, rumble strips. What, are they essentially a baby speed bump? Exactly what are they?
Very baby. No more than half, three quarters of an inch tall. Arnold, correct me where I'm wrong here. They generally are used in intersections and points where people should be aware, maybe. It simply makes them aware. It causes them to pause, to think. It does not, certainly is not a speed bump or anything like that. Causes no concern in that regard.
So normally, they're in, let's say, a series of, let's say, five to 10, something of that nature?
Exactly. Usually about half the length of a car.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
I might add, just to simplify it for simple minds such as my own, these rumble strips are similar to what you might run into if you're on a toll road and you're coming to a toll booth and they want to make you aware that there is a period that you need to think about slowing down. It's like a washboard, a small washboard. That being said also, I think personally that this is a avenue that we really need to seriously consider approving. And I'm just going to base this on a study from our speed trailer that sat in the Stone Mill neighborhood for eight days. And over those eight days, there were 4,009 cars traveling through Stone Mill. So the number of cars has significantly dropped since a year ago or so when this started being discussed. The average speed of those 4,009 cars in this neighborhood with a 25 mile an hour speed limit was 22.374 miles per hour. At the 50th percentile on the trailer, the average speed was 23 miles an hour. At the 85th percentile, the average speed was 26 miles an hour. So I think, and again, I'm just speaking for myself, I think that this is a good step in placing these rumble strips strategically through Stone Mill.
Mr. Mayor, I would also point out that the investigation has not been undertaken. We will investigate, we'll do. But I too have great hope about rumble strips, as well as driver feedback signs in that area. And whatever turns up, we're going to recommend. And depending on its level of expenditure, certainly it will be a report back to council or a request for expenditure of funds.
Thank you. I will just add one more thing. I know that, oh, a matter of two or three weeks ago, in doing my due diligence, I had a conversation with someone that actually, we did discuss these rumble strips. And then that, in addition to having that coming back as a recommendation from our Traffic Commission that has looked at this on two different occasions, again, just makes me feel that much stronger that this, assuming that it's an affordable expenditure, would be a good way to address this issue for the residents of Stone Mill. Do we have any further discussion? Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Opitz.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Item 2, reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None this evening, Mayor, but they do start next month.
All right, thank you, sir. Item 3, "Consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount not to exceed $400,000 for a construction project to install a splash pad slash restroom facility at Sunrise Park to be paid from the 2012 Series A Revenue Bond, excuse me, with a $100,000 reimbursement grant from the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director." Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to comment. I think this is a great idea. It's a great opportunity. Our pools are nice, but I think with the innovation of the splash pad, that it's a great opportunity to play in the water. This particular pad, is it, what would be the hours?
Park hours.
Okay, so, I mean, but they can start in the morning and go until late at night?
It does not require lifekeeping staff, lifeguards. So the hours can be extended. And pretty much, it has, in fact, a mechanism that if it's not running when you get there, press a button and the whole thing starts running.
Well, I noticed, I was down in Texas over the last holiday and there was a splash pad in the park and I noticed that people were playing there early in the morning and even late at night. And then sometimes when I'd go by, exactly it was off.
That's right.
So, or just a little, maybe a little bit of water. So I think it's a great idea and I encourage us to go forward with it.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion? Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Item 4, "Consider approving an expenditure of funds not to exceed $150,140.95 for Jackie Cooper Gym floor replacement to reimburse as an insurance claim as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director." Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess. I'm sorry. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
This is, really could be delayed until my report, but I think since this is a topic at this time, we should also report that we've had several people come and look at the roof of the Jackie Cooper Gym. We have been notified by several that the roof is failing. We are currently awaiting a report to recommend a method, a system that will replace the roof and make it correct for the building. So you will be seeing not only this one, which will be fully funded by an insurance claim, but you will be seeing a request for expenditure to replace the roof of the Jackie Cooper Gym within the next month or two.
My question is, the roof on the Jackie Cooper Gym, is that also part of an insurance claim?
It will not be, sir.
But my thought process in this discussion, my thought process is that it might be in our best interest as a council to table Item 4. Until such time as we get to address the roof issue, it would be, I think, foolish to spend money on a floor that the roof is allowing water to run into.
We do have a insurance claim timing issue. We have been paid for 65% of this particular claim to this point. The other 35% is awaiting funding for this project. And we do have, we do need to move it on. So I might suggest that rather than table the motion, that we direct the City Manager, along with the Parks and Recreation Director, to bring continuous reports back to council. That we certainly can delay the installation of the floor until we have the whole thing put together. But when it's time to move forward and so that we do not meet or miss any of our deadlines, that we're able to move forward on the project at that time.
Just one question. I'm kind of dabbling in this industry a little bit. My question is, have we looked into the possibility of an extension on the insurance claim for the floor?
In fact, we are working in that timeframe right now.
We're already, we've already extended it, in other words?
We are pushing the limit. So we need to be able to have the flexibility, Mayor, to move out and not only bring a item to council on a timely manner as soon as the system for repair has been delivered to us. But also, we need to be able to move forward pretty quickly. And I'm not talking weeks or days. I'm talking months. But at the same time, we need to be able to move forward pretty quickly.
So again, to simplify it from my simple mind, we could, if we were, if the council were to approve this, we could still delay installation until such time as the roof issues were addressed.
Exactly. And all it would take was a modification of the motion to allow or to direct the City Manager and the Parks and Recreation Director to do such.
Mr. Opitz, would you consider modifying your motion to, for those allowances?
Yes, I will. And I'll make a motion that we allow the City Manager and the Parks and Recreation Director to use their timeframe to go ahead and take care of the situation on the floor. And I make a motion that we... That's good.
So if I understand it, you're making a motion to approve it pending the roof situation?
Actually, given the City Manager and the Parks and Recreation.
Authority to.
Authority to take care of that timeframe, however they see fit.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Item 5, "Consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount not to exceed $124,560 for design services for Health Center Parkway Extension as recommended by the City Manager." Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Opitz.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Item 6, "Consider accepting a 2013 Community Development Block Grant from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce for Water System Improvements in the amount of $63,595." Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Item 7, "Consider and approve Resolution 2013-13, a resolution declaring the intent to consider approval of a project and creation of a tax increment district for districts under Local Development Act, directing the preparation of a project plan, appointing a review committee, directing the review committee to make finding..."
But I was wondering... I wonder if the City Manager may be able to go in depth a little bit and give some details over what this vehicle allows us to do and its intent.
First of all, the tax increment financing district or districts would be contained within a project area. TIF financing is but a tool that allows communities or areas to finance development in one of two ways. Either a pay-as-you-go or the issuance of bonds, special revenue bonds, based on the anticipation of increased revenue through development. We are, in this particular case, anticipating a sales tax-only tax increment financing district rather than a ad valorem or a combination of sales tax and ad valorem. A TIF district simply allows taxes collected within a defined area to be collected within that area and to be spent only within that area or in off-site improvements adjacent to, in support of, the development of a district. Basically, what we're talking about here at this point is the 178 acres that is south of the interstate, west of the hospital, east of Frisco Road, and actually budding the Oklahoma City limits on the south. The idea is that the taxes collected within that area would be enough to support the debt service on the installation of a interchange at Frisco Road and I-40, as well as the improvement of Frisco Road from Main Street, State Highway 66, all the way to Northwest 10th Street on the south. Additionally, there are certain internal roads that would be necessary to develop the area. Altogether, while there is about anticipated 750,000 square feet of retail space in that development, there will be, in all forms of development, whether it's commercial or residential, well over 1 million square feet of development in that area. And from initial reviews, I don't, you know, I'm having to temper my enthusiasm at this point, but the initial reviews of what we are anticipating in that area would indicate that we can easily accomplish the project plan by the utilization of sales tax only. The review committee that is being established also within this resolution is pretty well handled by state statute. And it simply says that the mayor will serve for the council on that committee. The chairman of the Planning Commission will serve to represent the Planning Commission. The county commissioners, which also share in sales tax, will name a representative to serve on the committee. That committee, which is established by statute, they will have the responsibility of choosing three names at large from a list of seven to be presented to them by the chairman to establish the total committee. And they must review all project plans and the budget, the anticipated budget for the improvement. Larry, am I missing anything to this point? Have I answered your question?
Perfectly. Thanks.
I might add just one thing. I know in the discussions, previous discussions regarding the TIF districts, although the focus in this case is on new development because that's an area that we would like to focus on. Obviously, that's going to benefit our city in the future. This can also be done, as I understand, Larry, as redevelopment of areas that may need, well, redevelopment to bring in additional revenues for the city and the district. Is that right?
There's no limitation. You can have several TIF districts depending on what your project planning goal is.
Thank you, Larry. Do we have any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I do have one question. So this is, it's a committee declaring the intent to consider approving the project, appoint a review committee. So the review committee is appointed, then what's the next step?
The next step is to bring you a recommendation.
Whether the TIF should go into place or not?
Whether any district within the area should be, that decision is left to this body.
But the review is the review of the economic impact?
To make sure that everything that they bring you makes economic sense.
Okay. So then it comes back in the council, puts the final seal of approval?
Absolutely.
Do we have any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Opitz.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item 8 is the City Manager's report. Information items only.
First of all, we have moderately good news on the sales tax front. Our sales tax rose over the same period from last year by 4.8%. And that brought our year-to-date increase over the first quarter of last year to 6.02%. I will remind you that we built our budget this year on a... I will remind you that we built our budget this year on a 3.5% increase, so we are exceeding our projections from a budgetary standpoint. Of note, because we do not budget use tax, because it is so volatile, it's all over the board. Last month, use tax was an increase of 4.14%, okay? And to demonstrate how much it is all over the board, this month, the increase was 97.48%. Our total year-to-date for the first quarter was 38.23%. I, I'm not going to try to decide what that number's going to be for the rest year, for the rest of the year, and that's why we don't budget it. We just, we're very appreciative and thankful for, for the increase and the money that we receive in that regard. J.I. is as well. The report I want to deliver on the Yukon Economic Development Authority, we had our organizational meeting on the fourth, on the fifth, I guess, of September. At that meeting, we elected a chairman and a vice chairman. The chairman is Ray Wright, the vice chairman is John Nail. Additionally, we have set meetings to, to occur on the fourth Thursday of each month at 3:00 PM in the conference room here at Centennial Hall. Between now and the end of the year, there'll be special meetings because we did not have a, a chance to file that with the county clerk's office, but we will do that in December, at which point they will become regular meetings beginning in January. They also, during that meeting, accepted the list of officers that will serve as the secretary, the treasurer, the general manager, the executive director, all of the offices within the authority and the trust. So we are fully operational at this point. And their first action items will be to address the final action item on this, tonight's city council meeting. I'd also point out that one of the, there are several streets within the community that need a lot of repair, but one of them that I would defy anybody to drive down with a cup of coffee in your hand was North Fifth Street. Yesterday, all the concrete was poured, all the way to ash. The railroad has been smoothed out. Beginning, I would think, late this week or early next week, I'm going to drive down there with a cup of coffee in my hand, because it is going to be a really nice street.
Make sure it's really hot.
Yes, I will. And open lid, so, because it's, it's, it's going to be a great improvement. There are so many of our businesses that use that street, as well as all of our city vehicles. It's important that that one be a good street, and I'm tickled to death. I'm also excited about continuing on with the improvements on Poplar, Yukon Avenue, which will be a very complicated repair, but I'm very tickled about what our street department and our public works group is doing to improve our streets within the community. I'd also point out as a final item that each year, we have a small event in Yukon called the Check Festival. The Check Festival will be the first Saturday of October. We are prepared, everybody's ready to go, everybody's on board. We want to invite not only everybody in Yukon to come and enjoy a great community event, but we want to invite all our neighbors to come and be a part of that. I will be downtown early, getting my kolaches, and I hope you will be too. Mayor, with that, I stand ready for questions.
Do we have any questions for the city manager on his report? Seeing none, item nine, new business. Seeing none, item 10, council discussion. Councilman Gerba?
Well, I was going to say, I don't really have anything, but Check Fest. I, I challenge everybody to bring somebody from outside Yukon to Check Fest. I talk to people all the time that have never been down here, and then as soon as they come down, they're like, wow, this is really pretty cool. So we end up seeing them year after year, so bring somebody along with you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Opitz?
Yes, I'm really excited about the Yukon Economic Development Authority being formed. I think it's going to be a great plus to Yukon. Yukon's already a great place to live, as you know. And I'm also excited about the tax revenue being up, isn't that nice? That's always a wonderful thing for the city manager to be able to report about the tax revenue being up. I'm glad it is. What I'm most proud of, he mentioned that this is Constitution Week. We live in America, and you should be so happy to live free in America. And because our forefathers had the wherewithal to do the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence, and we're a free country for over 200 years, that is a wonderful, wonderful thing. Be thankful for that, but also be thankful that you live in the most wonderful city I know of, and that's Yukon, Oklahoma. That's all I got, mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Alberts?
Amen.
Well, with that, I just have a couple of things. One is, along the lines of the Check Festival, I can taste the kolaches, the honey roasted almonds, the sausages and the roast beef sandwiches. There's not enough hours in the day to enjoy all the goodies that are going to be there. So please make it a point to come, as Councilman Gerba says, bring a guest. On a more serious note, I know, along with the rest of you, my heart goes out to those at the naval base that had the unfortunate shootings yesterday and those families. Just pray that God would be with them and give them strength and comfort. And with that, we stand adjourned.